Okay, good evening. Welcome you to the regular meeting of the Carrollhead City Council, 6:00 PM Thursday, November 14th, 2019. Please stand for the pledge. In a moment of silence led tonight by Councilperson Curtis Devon.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, in the universal liberty of this world.
Roll call, please. Councilperson Oller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Carson.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Morris.
Here.
Councilperson Nassar.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Eight are present, one is absent. Thank you. We have time on the agenda for public comment. On items not on the agenda, if you would like to make a comment, please state your name and come to, well, come to the microphone first. State your name and your address. Thank you. Please let me your comments for three minutes.
My name is Donald Hyde. I live at 1411 Poplar Street, Terre Haute, Indiana. As this year is coming to an end, the election... As this year is coming to an end, and we're coming into a new year, the election's over. You guys have your offices, and you've also made your decisions, and the voters passed it. You have set yourself up for some big projects. But I'm wondering, and this is me alone, but I don't think I'm alone with this question that everybody's asking themselves, are we ready for these things to come to pass? I have lived in this town for 65 years, and I have seen other times where public comment was great, or public desire to see change was great, and they made movements and then made it happen. I'm afraid lately, I've been disappointed. And you guys keep passing the buck. Well, I'm here to tell you, you can't pass the buck on what you've set yourself up for. You want tourists to come to Vigo County. You want them to come and come to your, this one thing you're starting, I can't keep naming it, it skips my mind every time, and you also want a casino here. All that's going to require tourists to come here. My question is a simple one, and you need to answer it each one of yourselves, to yourselves, and come up with an answer to it, and how it go forward. Is this, how can we expect people to come and visit Terre Haute, Indiana, and be tourists here when we can't get the citizens of Terre Haute to be tourists in their own town? Think about it. What was the last you saw a public of citizens of Terre Haute go anywhere or anything in large numbers? And it was happy, they had an adventure. They wanted, they wanted to come back the next time and do it again because it worked for them. We've had a couple of moments here and there in this last decade where that happened, but we could never keep it going. You guys want to have tourists, the first thing you've got to do in the next four years before the casino was built, before this building is built, this, I can't name what it is, and you guys know what I'm talking about.
The convention center?
That's it. You've got to get people in Terre Haute to want to go to things in Terre Haute, to participate. I have said all along for the last two years, and I guess I have made myself very clear, so I'll try and make it more clear now, just tell you what you need to hear. You've got to build something that has a beginning, a middle, and an end. It can't be like the mayor's project where he went around and said, "By golly, let's take some money and let's put these ramps on the corners so wheelchair, or some baby luggage, y'all can go on." And they did that, and they are great in a few spots, but you can go nowhere on them. You have to go and do a whole lot of them in a row, so they lead from point A to point B. You've done none of that. Now, I have an idea, and again, this is one idea. You need to develop your own ideas, but here's one. I've been here for a long time. I have never, ever, ever been motivated either as a child, a young man, a student. I've been three different colleges in this town, so I know what this would be student. Where I've ever wanted to jog or walk anywhere in this town, where you go from point A to point B and you have some sort of walk or race, and everybody gets together and has a good time. I've seen that in other places. Hey, big time. It's famous.
Mr. Hyde, could you, could you add your comments?
All right, here's the point. Here's, here's, here's the idea. I am for the Four Parks Walk, but in order to do that, you've got to get serious about fixing Ohio Boulevard from the river all the way to where it ends at Dobbs Park. Now, if you can get to Demming Park, up Ohio Boulevard to Demming Park, Demming Park has a place that goes on to Poplar Street and allows you to get to Dobbs Park, and it's going to be done on foot, bicycle, walking, running, jogging, I don't care what. But you've got to take and figure out a way to build a couple of key sidewalks, and then all those curves have to be fixed. And then you can actually have events going from Fairbanks Park, Demming Park, to Dobbs Park, and returned. You could organize different groups, and they could have them on different days during the summer and spring. Remember what I told you guys, we rarely do anything in the different four seasons.
Please wrap up your remarks.
All right. My point's this, if you did that, you could at least cover spring, summer, and fall. But you've got to give the people an opportunity to do that by fixing a way to do it. And right now, you don't have that. I don't, don't take my word for it. Look into it yourselves, all nine of you. Look into it. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment that in the last three months, there have been three major parades downtown attended by thousands of people. There will be a major event on the first weekend in December downtown, where there'll probably be 10,000 people in attendance. I invite you to attend those. Are there any corrections? Or is there any other public comments? Any corrections to the journal?
There are none.
Any communications from the mayor?
I did not receive any.
Any reports from city officials?
I did not receive any.
Any reports from the Board of Public Works and Safety?
I did not receive any.
Any reports from standing committees?
I didn't.
I do have a report from a non-standing committee. As most of you know, the exploratory committee on chicken ordinance has met a couple of times in the last month or so. Our last meeting was this week. You do have a little written reported recommendations. Please keep in mind that these are not total recommendations for an ordinance. They were recommendations on changes and additions to an already draft ordinance. And if you, any of you would like to see that, we can provide it, but Mr. Feligence is in the process of writing a final ordinance for consideration. So if you have any questions about that, myself, Todd Nation, and Curtis Devon were on that committee from council, as was Dana Gatticken from Purdue Extension, Patricia Weaver, and Ellie Caldwell, who are citizens who are interested in this ordinance, and also Deborah Floyd from the Advisory Board on Code Enforcement of Animal Control Issues. So that was the committee, and this is the report. If anybody has any questions, or Todd, or Curtis, you'd like to make a comment?
I'll just add that I think you would save a lot of council a lot of work on this by involving especially the folks from animal control. I think that we've done a good job within this committee of soliciting and receiving input from them to try to get to the bottom of just what we need to do, to have them be on board, or at least not against having chickens incorporated into our ordinance. That's a big step, I think. And by the time Eddie and his office finishes incorporating what we, the feedback that we've given and heard, I think that we'll have something that is ready for this council to consider. I don't think we've ever had anything that was developed with this level of input and this level of sensitivity, if you want to put it that way, to date. So we look forward to having the finished product before the council.
Thank you. Are there any items previously tabled?
There are none.
Are there any tax maintenance confirmation?
There are none.
And if we have any items on second reading, items on first reading? And I might note that all of these, for us to take action on them tonight, we'll need to vote to the council person.
Madam President, to save a little time, I vote that we, I move that we take action on appropriations 22, 23, 24, and 25.
Second. It's been moved, excuse me. It's been moved by Councilperson Azar and seconded by Councilperson Oller that we vote to vote on appropriations 23 through 25. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can so take actions. First item of business.
Appropriation 22, 2019, $40,000 from cumulative capital improvement number 04010050 to tree maintenance engineering number 4 through 2190.
Additioner.
Madam President, members of council, Chuck Anis, city engineer. We have a cumulative capital improvement budget of about $125,000 a year that we use to cut down dead, dangerous trees. We've found that over the years, this, this money is funded through cigarette tax. Over the years, we've accumulated a little bit of a cash balance. Right now, our cash balance in that fund is $165,000. We'd like to appropriate $40,000 of that money to cut down more trees before the end of the year. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public who'd like to speak on appropriation 22?
Yes, I would. We have fewer trees now than we've had in my entire lifetime. You're talking about cutting down more trees for the sheer purpose of cutting them down. Now, I'll grant you, I've seen some trees that need pruning, and some of them need to be cut down because even I agree they're dangerous. But I have seen lately, you're going around cutting down trees that are healthy, there's nothing wrong with them at all, and when you cut them down, you're not replacing them. So we have fewer and fewer trees. Where, first of all, we've spent the last 30 years planting short trees, trees that when they grow to full health and everything is right up out of them, they stand about 20 feet tall. For these trees to help clean the air, they've got to be at least 40 feet to 60 feet tall, and they're nowhere near that nowadays. I once to run from my house when I was a child, up Poplar Street to Thompson School, where I went on 12th Street, in the rain and not get wet because of the trees that were so tall, they caught the rain, and it did not come down and get the sidewalk wet but in a few spots. You can't do that nowadays. I'm sorry, I'm against more trees being cut down that are not really diseased, really dangerous. I think, I've seen it, just last week, a bunch of trees were cut down on South Seventh Street that had no reason at all to be cut down, other than they wanted the lumber. I don't know why, but it wasn't right. And I think we need to question how many trees we're cutting down, because we're going to end up with less and less trees. Like I said, right now, I know for a fact we have less trees now than we've ever had in my lifetime. Thank you.
Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
Chuck, can you talk a little bit about the Emerald Ash Borer and the, your department's priorities on removing trees like that, and what that's evolved into?
When the Emerald Ash Borer hit Terre Haute, we had 1,100 ash trees in our inventory.
That's the inventory being of the tree rows?
Tree row trees.
Publicly owned trees?
Right. Right. We had done an inventory of all the trees in the tree row. We had about 17,000, 18,000 trees when we did the inventory. It's been a few years now, but 1,100 of them were ash trees. Some private entities chose to treat them. It's an ongoing process. You need to treat it and then re-treat it and keep that up. The city treated a few trees, and then we haven't treated any lately. But we're slowly getting through that list of 1,100 trees. Every year, more of them are dying out.
Yeah. Thanks. That's my understanding from talking to Paul Rindman, the urban forester. You know, I, through my involvement in Trees Incorporated, I've planted hundreds of trees in the tree rows of Terre Haute, and was part of the, of the first inventory that Chuck referenced. And I've watched us shift our focus over the years to pretty much only spending money on removing diseased, dead, dying ash trees. And that's pretty much where we're at now, isn't it? Unless it's really dangerous or...
The silver, the silver maples are quickly catching up. We have a part of the history of Terre Haute, it looks like 80 years ago, it was 80, 90 years ago now, there's a WPA project that planted a bunch of silver maples. They're fast growing, but, you know, when you plant hundreds and hundreds of trees all at the same time, at the end of that life, their life cycle, they're all going to die about the same time, and that's kind of where we are with the silver maples. So we're cutting down a lot of silver maples as well.
And if I remember correctly, silver maples are the, the species that has the highest number in our tree rows, like by a long way, right?
Yes.
It's like a third of them, or 40 percent?
Yep.
So, you know, that's not too surprising. But the, so the silver maples are dying because of age, and that's been coming, and now it's happening. And the Emerald Ash Borer is taking out the ash trees, and every year, there are more of them to take down. I use the 3-1-1 system, like, well, I shouldn't exaggerate, monthly, but I report many a month. And over the last year or so, I've noticed that almost, almost every tree I end up reporting is an ash tree. They're, they're just at, they're diseased, they're under siege, and now we're systematically removing them. Mr. Hyde's right about the, about us not replacing them. And as a matter of public policy, I look forward to the, to getting to the point where we're able to again put money into planting programs. I know that some projects, when we go in and do like Margaret Avenue or South Seventh Street, trees are part of that budget and part of those projects, but when an ash tree dies on the block south of me and I report it and watch it go away, I, I don't see a mechanism that's obvious for replacing that. Am I right now?
No. Right now, our tree replacement policy basically hinges on the volunteer efforts of Trees Incorporated. This last weekend, we had a tree planting. I think we planted 120 trees. And there's, like I said, there's a fall planting every year, and we coordinate with that group. The South Sixth Street stuff that we did last year, we did some around Liberty Village the year before that, and this year was out at Brown and Locust. So, yeah, it's, it gets real expensive for us to hire a contractor to plant a tree. It's much more cost effective for us to give money to Trees Incorporated. They rustle up 100 volunteers, and we can knock out a huge tree planting in one morning. So that's, that's basically our tree planting policy as it stands right now.
Yeah, Trees Incorporated. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I guess to go back, our, our primary purpose in removing these trees is to eliminate the hazard. The dead, you know, a dead tree dropping limbs is, is a hazard to the public, and that's our first priority.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, I yield. I'll make the motion if nobody else has anything. So if there's no further discussion, I move for approval of appropriation 22, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson Morris, that we approve appropriation 22, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item of business.
Appropriation 23, 2019, $7,232 from fire prevention, non-reverting number 0750, to subscriptions and dues number 439185, for $616, to public relations number 439190, for $1,752, and to purchase of equipment number 444010, for $4,864.
Additioner.
Madam President, members of council, I'm Lord Lottlemoke Assistant Fire Chief, Bureau of Fire Prevention. This is an appropriation from a non-reverting account that's going to backfill some of the areas that we need to make whole before the end of the year. First line item is $616, that's in subscription and dues. All the people who work for me, the investigators, have to get trained through either the International Association of arson investigators, or the National Association of Fire Investigators, become certified, as certified fire experts and investigators, and with that becomes the cost for taking the national test or for being a part of that organization. It gives us validity when we testify in court, to show that we have training, so those things are what that's for. The second line item is for $4,864, that's to cover the cost of a new trailer. The, the only trailer we had was a small utility trailer that was called the Mass Casualty Trailer. So we pull up at schools with a red trailer that said Mass Casualty Incident on it. I didn't think that was a good thing to start, start our prevention program with. So we went to a, a trailer distributor that had a trailer that was on sale because of hail damage, so we got about an $8,000 trailer for more than four grand. So we have a new trailer now that we can haul the inflatable props that we have to teach kids about fire safety to the school, so that's what that's for. And the last part of it is the public relation part. We just, we were in a lot of schools this year, and we continue to be, and so that's just money that we needed to place in there. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anyone from the public who'd like to speak on appropriation 23?
Yes, Donald Hyde, I am 100% for this. In fact, it should be increased. Thank you.
Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to compliment the fire department on their safety program. I've seen it several times. I think they do a fantastic job. Third of all, questions or comments?
Miss Garrison? Just real quick, I, I know that we're going to probably end up doing something with this, but I wanted to tell you a story. We had a fire on Woodlong a couple of weeks ago, and there was a young, young girl, about six years old, that was in that fire with her parents. She had convinced them to buy a battery for their smoke detector, and, and when she smelled the smoke, she covered her mouth, she crawled to her parents' bedroom, woke them up, and got them out of the house. And when they asked her where she learned to do that, she said that she had just learned it at Lobachi School, when the fire department came there. We were just there that, you know, maybe a month ago. Well, you know, October. So everything that you guys have done with the passage of the ordinance that allows us to bill for those inspections, that money is being well spent because it just saved three people's lives. I'm sorry.
Okay, I move that we approve appropriation 23, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison and seconded by Councilperson Devon, that we approve appropriation 23, 2019. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Next item of business.
Appropriation 24, 2019, $62,157 from EMS, number 0270002700346010, to transfers from EMS, number 05110000391220.
Additioner.
Madam President, members of council, Jeff Fisher, fire chief. I'm sure you're choked up that I'm up here or just got a cold.
I'm just so happy to see you.
Thank you. But it seems so long since I've seen you all, and I think the last time I was before you was the first part of this appropriation I'm doing tonight, which is our, our final appropriation from the EMS non-reverting to our training on reverting funds. And that's what this appropriation is tonight. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public who wants to speak on appropriation 24? Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
There's no further questions. I move that we approve appropriation 24, 2019, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Oller and seconded by Councilperson Garrison, that we approve appropriation 24, 2019. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Thank you. Next item of business.
Preparation 45, 2019, $815 from office supplies clerks, number 010100020224, I'm sorry, 421010, to part-time deputy clerk, number 412015, for $750, to employer social security, number 413010, for $50, and to employer Medicare, number 413020, for $15. This is for, I'm sorry, Michelle Edwards, city clerk. Sorry about the cold. This is to cover the part-time employee that we will be having short term in the clerk's office for 2019. We had already approved, you guys had already approved, the expenditure for 2020. This is for 2019, and we're not anticipating longer than March of next year. This is to cover while an employee in the judge's office is off on leave. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public who wants to speak on appropriation 25? Council?
Madam President?
Go ahead and, any?
There's no further questions. I move that we approve appropriation 25, 2019, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Oller and seconded by Councilperson Nation, that we approve appropriation 25, 2019. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so approved. Next item of business.
Special ordinance 40, 2019, amending special ordinance 14, 2018, city clerk salaries. Michelle Edwards, city clerk. This is to insert the position for part-time deputy clerk into the salary ordinance. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone from the public who wants to speak on special ordinance 40? Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
There's no further questions. I move that we vote to vote on special ordinance 40, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Oller and seconded by Councilperson Garrison, that we vote to vote on special ordinance 40, uh, special ordinance 40, yes, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We may vote.
Madam President?
Yes.
There's no further questions. I move that we approve special ordinance 40, 2019, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Oller and seconded by Councilperson Garrison, that we approve special ordinance 40, 2019. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so approved. Next item of business.
Resolution 14, 2019, approving the expenditure for the 2019 city council internet usage. I can explain this if you would like.
We would.
Sure.
Trying not to sneeze, sorry. The city council has access to a internet usage during the council meetings, and this is to pay for the expenditure, for any expenditure over $250, the council must approve it.
And cough drops for Michelle.
And cough drops, and, yeah. And cough drops, yeah. You know, it's just, I missed you guys, sorry I wasn't here Monday, so make up for it tonight and make me feel needed.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on Resolution 14?
Donald Hyde, I'd like to speak on that because based on what you said, your internet connection only happens during your board meetings. Why is there not a place somewhere in City Hall where you can go and have this connection go on all the time, and therefore you could do some research, where each individual councilman could do some research on the internet about upcoming problems, or just looking to see that their decisions and their votes are based on the truth and the information that they've actually researched? I think that's a fair question, and I would support paying more for it if that's what it takes. Thank you.
Well, I won't speak for myself, but I suspect it is true for the other council members, too. We all are able to have internet connection on our own in other places, our homes and other workplaces, and so we wouldn't need for the city to pay for that, other than when we're at our meetings. So I think that's probably the answer from everyone here, but certainly is my answer. Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we approve Resolution 14, 2019.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Garrison and seconded by Councilperson Elliott, that we approve Resolution 14, 2019. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so approved. Next item of business.
Resolution 15, 2019, transfer of $13,305.69 in the street Portland budget.
Do we have a petitioner on this matter?
It has cough all over it. Counsel, I'll be brief.
We're having a spat at the legal and clerk table over here.
Counsel, just briefly, this is just part of our ongoing sidewalk maintenance. I don't know if Chuck can speak anymore to this, but typically what happens are the necessity for these resolutions is to reallocate the money to a different area. Obviously, there was a shortcoming in the sidewalk maintenance, and as we've seen our sidewalks, we always need additional maintenance in that area. I hope I can answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on Resolution 15? Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
If there's no further discussion, I move for passage of Resolution 15, 2019.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Nation and seconded by Councilperson Oller, that we approve Resolution 15, 2019. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is so approved.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Nation and seconded by Councilperson Oller, that we adjourn. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.